Hi, everyone. I think. Kathy's gonna go for a walk in the water. Nope, she's back. How are you?
Good. How are you? Hello. I like your new do, Susan.
It's a mess. I've been zooming all day.
I like it. It looks good.
Hi.
Rosemary.
How we doing today?
Doing swell. I am doing swell. I'm cold, so I'm just gonna wrap myself up. Hi, Ms. Andrea.
Hello.
So my divine white baby seal is back. Do you see like the two eyes and the
Oh, my God, it is.
Dreams.
Cool.
It's this is what this is what happens when you zoom for the past year. You find divine white baby fur seals in your lights. Hopefully, that will be all that I do. Um, do we have someone from RTM? We have town council. We have city council.
We do.
The bed. So we are, we are all here. So I apologize. I have my dog barking downstairs and there's no one home to help remind him that he's being rude. Um, so I would like to call the, um, I just need, hey, Kathy, could you take notes? Can you unmute? Could you make, could you make everyone unmute, please?
I've requested everyone.
I think you'd have to.
I got it. I got a sign that says unmute.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple of experiences in district where we've had a couple of Zoom bombers on both in our town meetings and also in the district. And so I think Mark is just trying to be incredibly protective for the town. So
bombers.
That's people who kind of enter the Zoom and say very fun things and then leave and fun being operative word, word. So I think that Mark is just being incredibly careful for us. And so I appreciate that. Um.
I promise not to say anything bad.
Um, so but Kathy, I am just wondering, you do such a great job with the minutes. Can I, can I, can I lean on you again?
Sure. This is the same price.
I'll go for a walk with you on that scene behind you.
Okay.
All right. So I am still, I've still called the, um, the meeting to order at five, um, 5:34. Um, and, um, we have the, the incredible meeting minutes done by Kathy in front of, oh, in front of us. Um, it came, it came this past week, Andrea, um, when she sent us the agenda. Um, and, uh, do I have a motion for acceptance of the meeting minutes that happened on January 26th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And Reggie, thank you. Is there a discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes for January 6th, please say aye.
Aye.
Oath abstain. That motion has carried. Um, and so, um, we'll just kind of go into our reports. Um, Susan, I think you've been kind of busy.
Well, I am feeling so hopeful and optimistic today. Can I tell you?
Please.
Our teachers and educators and bus drivers, everybody's getting appointments for their vaccines. And it was quite a process, I'll tell you, trying to, to do all of that. Um, and I met with a committee today of phased in strategic planning for more in-person learning. And a message will go out from me. We looked at a sample, um, schedule, and I think everybody's, um, in agreement. I'm going to get back to the principals one more time. But a letter will go out from me welcoming back our kids to, starting with four days in person and then going to four and a half days because our teachers will still can teach, continue to teach those children who are with them and those children who are remote. Some districts have actually rearranged everybody's schedule and kids have new teachers. I don't know how they've hired so many teachers and certified teachers at that. I don't know that they've hired highly qualified certified teachers in every discipline at every grade level to do the remote learning. But we do have all of our highly qualified certified teachers who've been teaching our children since September and will continue to do so. We're just hoping more of them will be in person. And I know that's a heavy lift, so I'm really maintaining that afternoon on Wednesdays for them to continue doing the planning for that. But a comment came up from educators and I've heard it from a lot of parents, less screen time is needed. We need to be making those connections, those in-person connections. We need to use, you'll love this, Andrea Ackerman, get those writing journals out with paper and pencil writing, you know? Let's get those art brushes out. Let's like get them out to play. Let's reengage them and make it exciting. And even some of the summer programming we're talking about. I just talked to Peter Bass and he says, I want to run a steam camp this summer in the school with some really fun things for kids to do and some learning opportunities. So we, you're really, our, our mission is to reengage kids. We'll be assessing them too. But it looks like instruction, the way we're assessing them. So we're learning about them and learning what they know and what they don't know and what they need to know. So, um, I'm feeling very hopeful today in that this large committee of about 40 people across the district, some were teachers, some were paraprofessionals, board members, administrators, so, um, all coming together and really being able to have a voice in all of this. I think that's so important. I know some districts probably are a couple of weeks ahead of us, but I don't think they probably had a committee of 40 people and really have been as thoughtful as we've tried to be about our kids. So, um, starting from March 22nd, we're going to start bringing back our elementary students and we're going to phase them in pre-K through two and then three through five the next week. Along with some sixth grade, we were talking sixth grade and ninth grade because those are the transition years to middle school and high school. And then they really want to bring all the rest of middle school and high school first week of April back to school. So, and then we'll have an April break and then they'll all be back. I'm ready to go for April, May and June. So and then four days until May. So four days for that month of April and then four and a half. So, you know, a good half day for, you know, especially middle school, high school, even elementary, because you kind of compact the curriculum, you get all your mini lessons and then you send them home with a little homework. Um, that can be really, um, done well. So, you know, it, I think it'll be a lot more, um, instruction and connection than we've had. And everybody seems to be looking forward to it, you know? They, I think there's a little bit of relief. I don't know if you're feeling this way, Patrice, but just with the news from Ledge Light and people being able to get on and, and get, you know, those vaccines scheduled seem to be, after the frustration seemed to be the calm. After the storm came the calm. I don't know. But, um, so, so that's what we're doing along with a lot of other things. We had our magnet, um, kind of open house on Zoom for elementary parents. And we had about 150 elementary parents joining all the elementary principals. Um, and that was last night. So, um, we, they've filled out a survey for, um, what they're thinking about, what they're, you know, intending, if they're interested in any of the, um, five magnet schools or if they want to stay at their own school. So that information will be helpful for us and we're collecting those surveys and we're sending out the survey on, are you ready to commit to four days in person and then four and a half? Or are you wanting to stay full remote? So a lot of communication.
Right. Um, and so I'm just going to throw all the Board of Ed stuff and then we, people can ask questions about that as what it, what it is. So
You'd come in with a 0% budget my first time around.
Um, so, um, yep, it's now the board's budget and we approved it at our last, um, regular Board of Ed, um, meeting. It is a 0% um, increase. Um, or decrease, however you want to, whatever way your glass is full. Um, and, um, uh, that budget, um, we, um, have been able to, we will be, we have, um, increased our athletic director to be a full-time athletic director. Um, and they will service the campus, um, on the hill. So they'll service between sixth grade, um, to 12th, um, and do all those things. So the board is just really kind of excited about that.
And it's not just, can I add this part? Because this part I really was thrilled about. It was the decision between Principal Bass and also Principal Kelleher, that it was athletics and activities. So looking at clubs and it's really about engaging kids before and after school to be part of that school community. So, um, I think that's super important.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, and, and, and so, um, I think that the board, um, budget really kind of made that commitment to really sort of enhance as much as the campus as we, that campus feel, the secondary with Groton Middle School and the high school. Um, so in this budget is also approved for an assistant principal that once again will be for the, be for the high school, but it will allow for more fluidity between, um, once we get back full time, Groton, Groton Middle School, um, and, and the high school. So, um, I think that the board feels really good about how we were able to sort of think about that campus and put, and put monies there. Um.
That what, these aren't additional positions. These were positions that we had, but we've kind of extended. So the dean is dean position became an assistant principal. So it's more time that they'll be able to spend, especially in the summer with summer school and all the things that activities that occur.
Um, and so, um, uh, in, in, and, and we sort of met that. So we've been able to meet a lot of our current needs, um, using the CARES Act for any of the COVID or pandemic. Um, things, um, so I don't mean to be things, but there's just like a ton of that stuff. It's the, it's the health and safety. It's also staff. It is, um, it is technology. We have, um, we have a, but we've been able to sort of use our current budget, um, and, and do some of the CARES Act. We also have some CARES Act goes out to 2023. Um, and so, um, once again, to help kind of cover the issues that have happened for us, um, because of the pandemic. And so that, that is in our place. We've also used our impact aid. Um, else also help, um, get us to that 0% budget. In years past, we have, we have got, used our health insurance, um, that corridor, that funding. But the board was very weary about weary, leery, not weary. I'm, I am feeling weary, but we were leery, um, about using of that health insurance. Um, because of, um, uh, the fact that many of our teachers and staff, um, have not been able to go to their doctors or have the procedures that they needed. So we anticipate that there's going to be a lot more use of that. And so we wanted to make sure that, that, that we didn't, um, underfund that or deplete that so that we couldn't cover the health insurance costs. So that's why we moved more towards that. Um, and, um, our business manager, Ken Knight, he felt like we were in good stand with the impact day that we could touch some of that just to make sure that, um, we could give you guys what we have promised you, which is a really good budget that meets the needs of our district, but also doesn't drain the town, um, of, of funding. So, um, I feel really good, especially when other towns around us have come in with 6.8 budgets, um, four-point budgets, um, three-point budgets. I feel really proud that we, once again, were able to meet, meet a district needs, um, but also, um, help the town.
Also, can I just add this that today John Burt and Cindy and Ken and I met together. Um, we've met before and last month. So we're going to try to do that on a regular basis and kind of check with each other on different funding sources and just to make sure our numbers are jiving and, and that they have a heads up that more impact aid came to the town than was, um, expected. So we've gotten additional funds last year and this year, um, and we may even get some next year too. So just to let the board know, um, the town know that it comes directly to them. Um, you know, and, you know, just checking to make sure that our numbers are all adding up.
So the, um, the other current thing that's happening for us is, um, we're, Susan and, um, the human resource director is finalizing the stuff around hiring assistant superintendent. For the past three months, Susan has sort of, along with her staff, have, um, been really doing both the superintendent and assistant superintendent's job. Um, so we're hoping to have that finalized, um, soon. Um, so that she can have a, a complement of the team. Um, so just that's sort of like, not that that's not enough, but that's what we're sort of doing, um, in our current place. Um, we're excited or I'm excited. Our next meeting, um, on Monday, we are going to have, um, Slam, who is the, um, architect come in. And, um, they're going to actually present, um, what the R2 elementary school designs are looking like. And we're also going to look at our tech plan and then also approve the tech plan afterwards. So our, our, our elementary schools, man, they're, they're going, they're happening. I don't know if you guys have driven by, but it's just really exciting to see those, those buildings just kind of rise.
We also, um, have Jerry coming in to talk to us about the Fields Task Force too. And, um, Steve Mansfield has agreed to come in, kind of in the mid, mid portion, like around 6:20 to give us an update on health.
Right. And then so the fields, because I know that the town council and the RTM, I think the RTM, but I know that the town council has had a presentation about the fields. Um, and, um, so I just, we haven't been able to kind of get that to happen. So we are going to have that. So those are the things that are happening sort of like in our midst, but we're also, um, I know that the district is working pretty hard. We have chosen all of the themes for our magnet schools. So come, when we open up our school district next year for next year's school, there is going to be five elementary schools that are going to have magnet themes. And they are for just the district. It's not that we're taking kids from New London, Ledgerd and whatever. It is, it is magnet themes. Susan spoke to that about a survey. We, we are going to be going through, um, our process of, um, doing the lottery and that should all be done by May. Is that, is that your thinking, Susan?
Yep.
Um, and that we will then have up and running our Groton Middle School and then with, on the campus of the high school. So, um, it's exciting times about what we think about what's going to happen in 2021.
We have had students from outside the district make requests, especially being an international baccalaureate campus to pay tuition to come to our school. So that's something that we have contemplated. We have, um, you know, the per pupil cost, but that seems a little high for a lot of families. So, but that is something we've talked about. And the reason we're intra-district and not inter-district and allowing other towns to come in is there's a moratorium on that from the state. So we couldn't do that, but we could have families who wish to come in. Um, and pay a tuition, um, that was the cost of the per pupil spending. But otherwise, what we have intra-district. So kids in town will either have a wonderful neighborhood school or they can choose from the other schools.
And, um, also on the website, we have a ton of stuff on our website. Um, but one of the things that's on the website is the neighborhood school. So if you have, people are saying like, I don't, especially for those of us who live in the city and they don't know, is it a Catherine Kamowski? Is it, um, the Thames River Elementary's, um, magnet, um, school? If they go on to that, on to our website, they can kind of see where their neighborhood falls in terms of those two things. So once again, um, we're busy. Um, but I, I think, um, at this point, we could entertain any questions if, that you might have about any of the stuff that we, that Susan and I talked about, or Andrea or Rosemary and Jane, if you feel like, or, um, wanted to add something that I might have forgotten. Patrice?
Very, I'm just very interested, very excited about so many teachers wanting to come to Groton schools. The interviews for assistant superintendent are, are going very, very well. Lots of talent, lots of enthusiasm and admiration for this district.
Thank you, Jane.
They certainly have done their homework.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just, I was trying to get some notes down. Not having children in the district, I don't have the information that probably some of you already have, but you're going back four days and you're starting with pre-K to two, then you're gradually inching up three, five. What is the high school looking like? And when, when will a transition take place for the high school?
So the high school has about 50% out fully remote. We've, we've actually, since the beginning of the year, brought back a lot of kids four days a week. We looked at high needs. We looked at special education, EL, disconnected kids, um, to have four days a week. So it's not like we haven't had students in four days a week. However, the high school, you know, has been making phone calls and so is the middle school personally inviting kids back four days a week who really are either failing or they're just not doing well with it. And they've gotten a really positive response. So we're getting them in now. Those kids not waiting. But, um, I, I'm trying to remember the chart in my head, but I think it's, um, the first week of April that, or actually it's the 29th of March that ninth grade will come in and then the rest of the grades will come in the next week.
And are they going to be four days or are you going to have 50, 50? How is it going to look?
They're going to be four days. Um, you know, that we really can't cohort. The cohorting was really good for contact tracing. But we're hoping that with, um, most adults having their vaccine, we, and we've got, we're buying more death shields. So we're doing things to support. Um, you know, if we're not as socially distanced, what else can we be doing? The masking is essential. You know, our numbers have really gone down and Steve Mansfield made me feel real confident. He joined the committee and really talked to the committee about how things were really improving and, um, that this is really the right time to start bringing kids back. So by May and June, for the last two months, they'll probably be four and a half days. So we'll include Wednesday as a half day. Um, and then send them home early with some homework and the teachers can do their homework.
Okay. We're, we're still though in the red, are we not? I think, I think rotten is still in the red as far as, um, rates. So I think it's, I'm just a little concerned. Um,
you know, Patrice, that's, you know, I've gotten a lot of pushback from parents, but, you know, especially when we went remote, but I kept saying that they Groton and New London are a little different than Old Line.
Right.
And North Stonington, you know, as far as the, the number of people in our community and the number of the spread. So I feel pretty confident that, you know, waiting the three weeks like we're doing until March 22nd and bringing our littlest learners in first, that that's going to give us the right amount of time to make sure we're super safe. So.
So you're starting, so for the people who might be listening, you're starting with groups that you can't actually cohort. And then you're working your way up. And as we progress and hopefully we come out of the red, then you'll be bringing in the kids where it's harder to cohort.
Right.
Thank you.
You talk about the high school.
Also be on the website really soon. Kathy?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to get this straight for the, the minutes. So you increased an existing employee to an athletic director for next year. And you have an additional assistant principal for the high school.
It's not additional. No, so it's not additional. So thank you, Kathy. So we took a part-time athletic director and we made that person full-time.
Okay.
And then we took
He was a full-time employee though.
Right.
And he had, um, a case load of students. So we're just making sure that his full position will be, um, for athletic directing and making sure he covers both the middle school and the high school.
Okay. Middle school.
And then the athlete, the, um, assistant principal, we took a dean position and expanded the hours that that, that, that person would be working because deans, you work the school year, the assistant's principal, you have a, you tack, you tack on some more weeks. Um, and that's what we're doing for this other, for this position. So it's a full-time position, but we're just, we've moved it to the category of assistant principal.
Okay.
And we don't, I, I, the board in three weeks, two weeks are, is going to be hearing from the high school, um, about, and, um, and also about the athletic position. Like we've, we've approved these positions, but now they're going to come back and kind of tell us about what it's going to look like.
Okay, thank you. And I, I love that expression, littlest learners.
Yeah.
Bruce, thank you.
Thank you. I was just wondering, since you've gotten to high school and the, and the elementary schools, if you had the dates, we have sixth grader, just like when the middle school's going back four days.
So sixth graders we're bringing back with this, with the third graders through fifth graders at the end of March, the week, the last week of March. So they'll, they'll come back. Um, so I did three through, or the committee did three through six and then nine. Um, and that, that way I think our sixth graders coming in the four days a week will have time without, you know, such a large number of the seventh and eighth graders. And they kind of get acclimated, the cafeteria, the hallway, navigating everything. And then we'll bring back the seventh and eighth and the 10th through 12th the following week.
Okay, thank you.
That will be on the website, correct?
Everything's going to be on the website in different languages, um, with a chart. Um, with, you know, kind of laying out the expectations and really the safety protocols that'll be in place. So parents will be able to make that decision. You know, on whether they're ready to send them back four days and there's no more two-day cohort. So they'll either do four days or they'll do full remote. And we're hoping for, they'll want to send them four days.
Any other questions around the board stuff? If not, the town council?
Hello. Thank you. Um, thank you for the news on the budget and the news on your plan to get the kids back. That's wonderful. We, uh, met last night and, um, just cleaning up some excess property things. We are moving the athletic, the middle school athletic field lights. We moved that forward out of council. So that'll be, that'll be going forward. Um, we are working on, um, some resilience and sustainability things. Trying to get some focus going forward. As far as what's coming up, we have sorry, I've been constantly, since I got out of work and meetings and on phone calls, I apologize. Now here it is. We're going to be looking at, um, short-term rentals. We've, we had been meeting on this and then we got delayed because of, um, COVID and the council is going to be trying to come to some consensus as to whether we want to try regulating short-term rentals or not. We've been hearing from different parts of town, all over town. Not just unique to Mystic or Rotten Long Point. It's pretty much every part of town. We're hearing from people that are having concerns about short-term rentals. So, uh, we're going to be talking about that and, um, Chief Fasaro will be with us to talk about, um, what, what they are seeing happening. Um, we're looking at, um, the Pratt Building on the grounds of the Mystic Education Center. And there's going to be a new survey going out about what we would like to see happen in the space within the Pratt Building. Let's see. We are also looking at, um, an open space parcel that is significant for, um, natural wildlife and historical significance. Um, and we're going to be discussing that. And just cleaning up some odds and ends of, um, some tax abatements that counselors want us to talk about. And we're going to be talking. Yeah. Sewer tax abatement. All those fun things that counselors talk about.
Patrice, I had heard that they're building a little neighborhood over on the No-Ang school property. Is that true or is that a rumor?
On the No-Ang school property, they're building what?
On, on some kind of a, I don't know if it's a over 55 community.
No, that's not true. Not true. Um, maybe, maybe they were thinking Mystic Education Center.
Maybe that's what it was.
That's going to be
The oral, mystic oral school. Yeah, that could be it. Yeah, that might've been the confusion.
The proposal that's the state-owned property, um, and the, the preferred developer that was chosen, it will be a little neighborhood. And it will be a little walkable neighborhood, mixed use, um, with the amenities there. Um, it's over 80 acres of land and more than half of it's going to be preserved. So it's, um, it's something that will kind of keep us moving in the direction we've been wanting to go with reusing spaces.
Right.
Rather than developing untouched spaces. So, you know, the state said, here's this property. What are we going to do with that? And here's your options. And okay, well, let's take this one. And just like we've been trying to do with the, with the buildings that, um, when you guys are done with them and you turn them over to the town. And just like we've been trying to do with the, with the buildings that um, when you guys are done with them and you turn them over to the town, we've got a lot of action coming up on those as well. So um, it's, it's part of what we wanted to do was to use the existing developed land.
Right.
To grow the tax base and not have these eyes for us more.
And then I had one other question for you. The public hearing for the town council is the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday. I had had it written down as a different date. But then I um, talked to John Burt and he was saying it was the twenty-fifth.
That sounds right, but if you talk to him, he would know. I, I, for some reason, that makes more sense than the other date that I was thinking it was.
I'll get that out to the board members in my board notes and on the calendar, because I had had a different date.
Okay, it is, um, he did release it to everybody. I can make a note. Well, did you get a, did you get the schedule from him? Okay.
I just happened to ask him today.
Okay.
When we were meeting, because I, Joyce had called over to find out what the date is, but she had like the date of the thirtieth.
So it's the twenty-fifth?
So it seems like it's the twenty-fifth.
I can, I can, when I'm done talking, I'll look at, I mean, hi moderator Evan, how are you? I didn't see you come in. I can, um, I can look it up. I have to dig through my mail though, so I'll do that after.
May I ask, what was the uh, public hearing for?
But town council for the budgets.
We're, we're going back to a full schedule. The normal budget schedule where we're going to have the Saturday meetings and the evening meetings and I'm, I don't know what moderator has planned. I'm sorry.
They're going to be on Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't planned yet. I had asked for a feedback. I didn't get much, except I think we'll probably go back to what we usually do also.
I think that's a good idea.
Is that at six?
I'm sorry?
I don't know the time yet, Rosemary. We'll make sure you get it though.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking now. Um, I have March twenty-fifth at seven PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and, and Patrice, um, Susan and I will do our little bit of a presentation about what, how we got to where we're, we are at. Which is our sort of more normative thing that we have done in the past.
That's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and just also just to let people know that we, um, the board plans to, starting in April, to do sort of a mixed Zoom also in-person meeting. We found that we do have some technology where for people who still are feeling like they don't want to um, be, meet in person, they can come into us by Zoom. And then for those of us who want to be in person can be in person. I, it's a little bit easier because we're a smaller group of people. But I just wanted to let you know that we're going to try that transition starting in April. I have a question for the, the town. Um, so do we, do you see where we're having new development where we're going to have families? Like, you know, I, I always get um, not concerned, but I just always ponder about where we might be having new apartments with families. Um, and then also what does that do to our schools?
So as far as um, what is being targeted, the developers that are coming in are pretty much reading the market and our town staff is reading the market. And um, we need housing for um, singles, right? And empty nesters, right? So you're looking at kind of like both ends of the spectrum. So um, right now, most of the projects that are being put forth are not housing for three bedrooms, right? So you're looking at having um, single people or young couples. Um, not really the room to have the children in the apartments is what the developers are, are um, trying to build. And then at the very other end of the spectrum, people that want to downsize, right? So you've, your kids are all gone and you've got this big house and now you want somewhere with all these amenities. And so then there are apartments that are smaller for um, the people at that end of the spectrum as well. So it's really targeting kind of both ends of the spectrum. Um, because um, you know, somebody was asking about affordable housing. We have, um, I think it's twenty-three, twenty-three percent of our housing stock is affordable housing. And you compare that to Stonington, which is at five percent.
Wow.
So, so we have, we have a lot. We have, um, the only people that have like more affordable housing than we do are places like Bridgeport and Hartford, right? So we have a lot of affordable housing. Um, so we really need to kind of fill those other niches to try to get people in. And it's not really, from what I've seen, it's not targeting families at this point because we have a lot of the housing stock for families already.
What about all the apartments that are going up over by Charles Barnum?
I'm sorry?
The ones that are um, being built over by Charles Barnum in Pleasant Valley, those condos or apartments?
That's a private developer, so I'm not sure what's there. I can find out though, or um,
Yeah, any help you could give us in our planning
Okay.
Would be wonderful, you know?
Yeah, I'm more in tune with what the, um, what, what we're trying to, what we're trying, right? Because we can't really, you know, if a private developer buys private land, they can pretty much do
Whatever.
On it, right? Or nothing on it. They can just leave it sitting there with empty storefronts and we pull our hair out trying to get them to do things.
Thank you. Is Reggie still here?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. He comes back. So what's happening for you?
Well, uh, in the city, we have an upcoming primary election.
Now.
You know, um, it's going to be interesting moving forward, you know, with the, between the two candidates. Um, in the city right now, also, I know the city has been working with um, Ledge Light Health District to have um, vaccination clinics at the municipal building, which has been really good for, you know, those individuals who have been eligible to receive the COVID vaccine at this time. On a personal note, I am stepping down from the city council effective two weeks from today. Because I am um, in the process of trying to get a position with the city. And it would not be um, good for me to be on the city council and also be employed.
That makes sense.
Bad for the city council, but good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Our loss.
Now, I'm, I'll still be serving the community.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, just not in the capacity as a, on the city council. And that, that's, that's really it in terms of reports for this time.
And the city police?
Yeah, unfortunately, the uh, chief is retiring, you know, and it's going to be a, a huge loss. Our city, but I do believe his replacement i- is going to continue to move the city, you know, police department in a, in a good direction of safety in the city. That is all I have to report this time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I miss seeing you on the screen.
Yeah, I, I took it down just to run an errand and I made it back in time.
I hear you. I hear you. Um, RTM, if, if there's no other questions for Reggie, sorry. If not, then RTM.
Yeah, the RTM doesn't, you know, we are just uh, having our meeting next week and we are going to be focusing on the Gold Star Property and um, the Colonel Ledgerd School Property Sale. So those are the, the two items I think we're going to have. Uh, and then I think there's another one, which is the um, there's a, um, so those are the two items that have been passed on to finance. And then uh, we had a um, referral from one of our members to look into the unassigned fund balance. So um, there, there was a opinion from the town attorney that that which was first um, suggested by Representative Lauren Goffier um, as under power of initiative. It's not um, legal because it uh, does the charter lays out the budget process. So things that um, would try to redirect the budget process or things that the RTM can, has a jurisdiction to deal with. Um, and we can't do that by power of initiative either. So uh, that uh, will go back to, has gone back to finance to try to see what they want to do with that um, idea because there was interest on the finance committee um, in pursuing it maybe as a recommendation to the town council. Or in fact, I did um, reach out to the, the mayor um, to see if there was a possibility of um, having uh, a joint meeting of our finance committee with some subset of the town council or the town council uh, to, to discuss this issue and, and see if something could come out of that. So that's kind of, you know, another issue. Um, we're moving into budget season, so I have to make my own schedule. I haven't, I know Betsy sent it to me a few days ago um, for the town council. So you know, we are, we don't really get going until May, um, so it's not too imminent. But um, those are the main issues. I think we have um, some folks who are going to come speak with our group uh, on Wednesday on artificial turf. Uh, that's heating up with the um, sports, uh, with the, the um, the task force that Bruce served on, the representative Flack served on, sorry, the uh, I'm forgetting the name of your task force. It was the sports fields and the track fields advisory task force. Um, and so those, those are the main things we, we, that we're addressing. And if Representative Chase or Flack have anything they want to add, please do.
Kathy?
What we worked on last month was the RTM authorized the town manager to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the Community Connectivity Program Grant. And um, there was a discussion on the criteria for selection of student liaisons for the RTM. That didn't go anywhere unfortunately yet. That's uh, for some reason has proved to be a thorny issue for some members. Um, even though the board seems to find it a fabulous thing and I think it would be a good thing. Um, for some reason, uh, we have several members who are have very uh, strong opinions about it.
I need to tell you, Sima, this year we've really lost our students. Um, just they're so tired of zooming. So by the time that they come at night, um, we, it's been, it's been pretty difficult. In fact, we've asked um, our, our principal to kind of re, you know, we see what they were. Because we, at one point, we had very active student representatives and I think it's a cycle. Things, sometimes they're just kind of don't know where their place is. But this year it was such an off year um, that I, we just didn't have the student reps. Um, and then, you know, the quality, the audio quality, it just, it, um, so it was a disappointment for this year, I think.
We missed them.
Yeah.
So can I just ask this? I know that um, Patrice had said that the lights um, were approved for the athletic fields from the town council um, for the middle school. And I think they're going to the RTM next. Is that right? Patrice?
I'm flipping through my papers to be sure I said the right thing, but yes, we approved it last night. We also approved a pump track, but anyway, um, let me see. Public hearing for Pleasant Valley.
So if you need us to speak to it, Sam and I can come or Sam and Kim and I can come, whatever you need. Um, just to give information on that, but we're, we're kind of excited. Um, our middle school came under budget by six million dollars and the lights are about eight hundred thousand and that's what we're kind of looking for from that. Um, but we're not planning on spending all of the six million, believe me. But the lights were a big request by a lot of people in town because we'll be able to use the fields longer.
Yes.
Actually, um, I may have misspoke. I don't think it has to go to the RTM.
Oh, okay.
Because I think um, what we were doing, the, the resolved, right? The resolved was to change the scope of the plan that we voted. And so the resolve does not have, unless they made a mistake when they, when they did the resolve, the resolve is not sending it to the RTM. So the resolve said that uh, the town council determines the scope of the Groton twenty-twenty plan project approved by voters um, to include the athletic fields, outdoor lighting to the allowable uses of the funding and the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, and resolve that the Groton Public Schools will not charge a fee for those fields aside from incurred utility costs. So it looks like uh, what we voted was just to change the scope of the project. And it looks like it does not go, or at least it was not referred to RTM last night. So I was wrong. We could so, throw something else your way though, moderator Evan, if you'd like.
No, we're, we're good.
Is, um, do we have any new business?
Guess not.
I, I, I guess not. Um, so
What does that mean?
Andrea?
So So if there is no new business, um, it's good to see everyone and I, um, there was a part of me that wanted to cancel, but I just think that there's so much going on with the schools reopening that you guys needed to kind of hear what we're doing. Um, and, and stuff so that you can kind of get that information or direct people to the website. I think Susan is trying very hard to make sure that that website is as up to date as possible so that parents could kind of get, get information from there versus trying to find it in social media and not necessarily getting the correct information.
You give me the correct website so I can put it in the minutes, please?
Yeah, yeah, Groton, Grotonschools.org, right?
That's it.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the CT dash this and
That's the emails. That's what to go to.
But if not
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
I have a second?
Say goodnight, Gracie.
Good night.
Goodnight, Gracie.
Good luck to you, Reggie.
Yeah, Reggie, we'll miss you.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.